I'm trying to remember. I've done before.
Okay.
As in, you just read that first part.
Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, May 23rd, 2017. Please join me for the Pledge of Legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
I have, and I would offer a motion to approve the May 9th minutes as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And the agenda, a couple changes. There'll be no report from Southern Plains. Julie's missing. Danielle's missing.
So on 10A, that's gonna be...
And 10A, Nicole will be reporting on non-revival, non-renewal of probationary teacher contracts.
And we don't have this one.
Yeah. Okay. I mentioned that already. Okay. So... Entertained a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
As amended, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have no celebrations. Superintendent's report?
Very good. First of all, can I talk about the student enrollment? We actually picked up, believe it or not, we picked up three new students today. Two at the high school and one at sixth grade that would be in next meetings' numbers. But we're, right now, we're ending the year with 787 students at the high school, 874 at the elementary, for a total of 1,661. And we do have a little bit of a mini-celebration here. I want to share with the members of the board this letter that we received from the Minnesota Department of Education. As you know, as members of the community and the teachers all know, we do a lot of testing of our students. And testing security is very, very important. And this year, we were one of the schools that were selected by the Minnesota Department of Ed to actually have a monitoring site visit. And so, we had an individual from Minnesota Department of Ed that came down and spent the day with us, and actually went around and viewed the testing of students, and went around and actually visited with some teachers to talk about test security. And this is like getting a very positive audit. This is a very nice letter from the Minnesota Department of Ed, basically saying that all security protocols for test administration were in place, during the monitoring visit, and the test administration appeared to run smoothly and effectively, the classroom was set up properly for test administration, secure materials were properly accounted for and tracked, and all personnel involved in the test administration had signed the assurance of test security and non-disclosure and received applicable training. And I want to give a public special thanks to Mary Cole of our district office staff. Mary spends a lot of time getting these tests ready and organizing them and training the individuals that do the testing and the monitoring. And also want to thank all the individuals that came and actually helped with the testing. And of course, we want to thank our teachers for all the good work that they do, because our test results that came back, when you see the final results from the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments Exam, you're going to see that our students made significant growth this year, and especially in the reading area. So, that new reading curriculum, especially in eighth grade, the grade that really scored the best, that showed the most growth, was eighth grade language arts. And they're using that new curriculum for the first year, and so, we're pretty proud of that. Talk about the school calendar, there's a few important things coming up. First of all, Friday, June 2nd is the last day of students, and the commencement graduation ceremony will be held Sunday, June 4th, at 3:00. That will be held in the gymnasium, of course, at Fairmont High School. We have a couple of committee meetings coming up tomorrow. On May 24th, we'll have a Staff Welfare Committee meeting. We have a couple of items there to discuss tomorrow at 4:30. And on June 7th, we'll have an Operations Committee meeting. That June 7th meeting is important, and that will be reviewing both the end-of-the-year budget and the projected budget for the following school year. And then, we'll take the revised budget and the proposed budget of next year, we'll take that to the Board on June 13th, which is our next School Board meeting. And then, just want to point out publicly, we have a new writer for the Fairmont Sentinel. We have one of our own high school graduates and has gone off to college and has now come back, and Brooke Woolrobbie is a 2011 graduate of Fairmont High School, and went off to what college, was it St. Thomas? St. Thomas graduate and graduate, and her major was in journalism. And so, we welcome her. We spent some time today at the district office, and I know she's already interviewed Principal Niss, and is looking for some stories on education. So, we welcome her back to our community. It's always great to have a Fairmont grad come back.
Excellent.
Joe, I have a quick question for you, if you could answer. With the close of the legislative session, was the education omnibus bill, ominous bill, one of those that was passed, or is that one that's in the special session?
It's one that's in the special session, actually. The, right, last night at 11:30, the legislature kind of waved a white flag, and they have, I think, seven or eight of the appropriation bills left to do, they have the tax bill left to do, the transportation bill left to do, and the bonding bill left to do. Otherwise, they're almost done. The Omnibus Education Act was not passed last evening, nor was the rewrite, the revision to the teacher licensing bill that the governor vetoed mainly because of lack of funding and a couple of other tweaks the governor asked for. But I understand that there are some backroom negotiations going on, that that bill may be coming. The pension bill is still in process, and of course, that's one that our own local state senator is in charge of, Senator Rosen. And the real question there is whether the teacher retirement annuity is going to be part of the pension bill, and if so, will that increase the contributions for both employers and employees for this coming year, or will they put that off two years from now? There's still a lot of work. The legislature went back in a session today at 3:00. They adjourned last night at 11:59, they had to be done by midnight, and the governor called them back in a session at 12:01. And, but he said that they would actually come and actually be in session starting at 3:00 this afternoon. So, they have a few days left to go. The latest thing with the education bill, though, the good news is that there is 2% on the formula, and that's something that all of us have asked for and advocated for, to have the School Aid Foundation formula increase each year by 2%. The governor insisted that he wanted more money for preschool, and there's an appropriation for that. We're still looking to see whether or not the language that requires local districts to negotiate the last-in-first-out clause, and that's one that the majority party in the legislature is insisting upon. So, Mark Twain had a great quote, "There are two things you should never watch being made, sausage and law." And right now, it's tough to watch the legislature in work, but thank goodness, we have 201 legislators up there and a governor that are trying their best to do some good things for the state. So, I'll keep you posted, because they could get done as early as today, and it could be another week, and then it takes about a week to figure out what they actually voted on, and then sometime in the summertime, the legislature reads the bills, and it all goes to work. Anyway.
Mark Twain had a great quote about school board members, too, but we won't...
That is true. Okay. I'm finished.
Okay, you want to continue and change after finances?
I'd love to. I did meet with Sue Nelson this afternoon. We went over the bills and the different financial situation here. Let me get a little organized here. First of all, the wires and transfers for May 8th to May 18th. I can notice a big transfer from the IDs payment. That's a payment that's a metered payment system that comes from Minnesota Department of Ed. They appropriated $832,786 to the school district. And this metered payment, by the way, comes into our school district twice a month. If we look at the check registers, I'll call your attention to a few of these. The first one is check number 2752. No, it's gonna be... It's check, it's, well, it's the one for Dan's Appliance. Dan's Appliance, there was a bill there for $650 that was to repair the convection oven in the school kitchen. And by the way, if some of your students came home today from the high school, and they'll let you know that they're serving food on styrofoam plates, it's because we have some plumbing issues at the high school right now, and the dishwasher is leaking. And so, there has to be some major repair done to that over the summertime. So, I would guess between now and the end of the school year, students will be eating off of styrofoam plates at the high school. Check number 59793 for advanced placement exams. The school district paid for 82 advanced placement exams. That was a total amount of $6,670. However, the state does reimburse us for about half of that, so we'll be getting a state appropriation of $3,384. And of course, as you know, students take the AP exam, if they score a three, or four, or five, many colleges and universities will accept those as college credits. Right underneath the AP exams, 59794 and 59795, there is a couple of bills there for Astoria Inn and Suites, and that's for the golf team, both the boys and the girls' golf team. They go up when they get ready for the state tournament that they practice, they have a practice around the day before, and then they tee off at 8:00 in the morning, so the students spend the night in the cities. And check number 59804, Sue wanted me to point out the Fairmont Opera House. The K through 2 students, 332 students from the kindergarten first and second grade, went to see the musical Susical. And was it good? It was excellent. Okay. They saw that at the Fairmont Opera House, and that money comes from the Student Activity Account. Are there any other questions on the bills?
I make a motion to approve the wire transfers for 5517 to 51817 in payment of the May 23rd, 2017 bills.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Joe. No old business, new business. Dan?
By September 1st of each year, our Board must pass a resolution to renew the district's membership in the Minnesota State High School League. A few of the services they provide include scholarships for AAA award winners, training for activities directors, administrative website assistance, rules training for officials and coaches, and also student insurance for catastrophic injuries. The membership fee is assessed in mid-August, and it's based on the number of activities that we sponsor. Last year, the fee was $2,260. I would offer a motion to approve the district's membership in the State High School League for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, Nicole, copy proposal?
With the end of our lease for our district's copiers, we need to bring these out for proposal. We worked for two, with two vendors who offer state contract bidding prices or better, so we're not required to go out for bids for our copy lease. The two vendors who submitted proposals were Riverbend Business Products and Metro Sales. These vendors met with staff in both buildings, as well as Lee Stewart and Sue Nelson. Proposals were received on May 3rd. Lee and Sue reviewed the proposals and asked for some clarification on several items. The initial recommendation was to go with a low bid for Metro Sales, however, with questions and concerns, the recommendation was delayed. And to address these concerns and questions, both Riverbend and Metro Sales were given an opportunity to present their proposals to the Operations Committee on May 17th. Present at that meeting was Dan Brookins, myself, and Danielle Schutze, Superintendent Brown, Lee Stewart, and... I'm forgetting his name.
Will McAdams.
Will. What's his last name?
McAdams.
McAdams, yes. And Sue Nelson, business, our business leader, Sue Nelson was there. And we met with both representatives from both groups, and following that meeting, the Operations Committee is recommending that the Board approve a five-year agreement with Metro Sales. The annual lease cost would be $7,899 less per year than we are currently paying, and the maintenance cost is $84 less per month. The total five-year lease cost for 19 copiers and print solution using a four-digit PIN would be $93,423. The total five-year maintenance cost would be $101,200. This represents the cost savings of $44,535 from our current five-year lease. The difference in the original bid between the two companies was approximately $25,000. And there was an amended proposal, a verbal amended proposal offered by Riverbend that decreased their bid by approximately $13,000. However, after looking at all of the ins and outs of it and the total bid, we are recommending as an Operations Committee that we approve the five-year agreement with Metro Sales for copier services at a total lease cost of $93,423 and $101,200 for maintenance.
Okay.
Was it a motion offered then?
Yeah, that's a motion, sorry.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any discussion, any questions?
It was good to vet it through, I think, with having them present more information, because we needed that and/or wanted that. So, thanks for hearing it out, too. That was appreciated, I think, locally, so...
Okay. Any other questions?
There have been instances in the past where I've, we had that, very shortly after I came on the Board, about the Life Touch starting to do the school portraits, and a local person, you know, had that contract for a long time. And I voted against Life Touch at the time, and voted for the local person, and it's something we're very cognizant of every time we have a situation like this, because we do know and appreciate the people that do business with us here in town, and we try to do that whenever possible. But we also have a responsibility to look out for taxpayer dollars as well, and this is, was a very significant amount in my mind. So, I'm hoping that we can continue to do business with as many local businesses and companies as we can. But, you know, I felt it was in the best interest to go with Metro because of the cost that they offered us.
Okay. Very good. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, personnel. Nicole, again?
Okay. We have to do this by resolution. Each spring, the Board must take action to approve the termination and non-renewal of contracts for any probationary teachers who will not have a position with the district in the fall. In addition to non-tenured teachers, this process also includes terminating contracts for any long-term substitute teachers hired during the year. These teachers do not have the option to request a hearing with the Board, nor do they have the right to reinstatement of a job. By law, the non-renewal of probationary contracts must be completed no later than July 1st. So, I will offer the following individual resolutions, and if I need to say more than what I do, please tell me. I, Nicole Green, introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Andy Soderstone, a probationary teacher. Is there an effective date?
At the close of the current school year.
At the close of the current school year? Is that sufficient? Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
I just want to make a comment about all five of these people. You know, Andy Soderstone did a great job for us. He is a local businessperson in town, and because of his business, he can only teach two class periods throughout the day, because he has a morning workout place and an afternoon workout place, and he did a great job for us. And, but what we decided to do was to hire a full-time eighth-grade PE health teacher who's coming up from Iowa. We hired him last week, him and his wife. And that, but, so, all five of these people, Andy did a great job, the other four people that were long-term substitute teachers for us, all of these five individuals were great additions to our faculty and staff, and filled in at a very needy time. It's really hard to find substitute teachers, but it's really, really hard to find a substitute teacher to do a month, or two, or three months at a time. And so, we, I just wanted to publicly thank all five of these, and just let everybody know that these are not being terminated because they did poorly, they did not, they did great, it's just that we don't need them anymore, and this is something we have to go through every year.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we'll have a roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I, Nicole Green, introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Chris Eisenminger, a long-term substitute teacher, effective at the end of this school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I, Nicole Green, introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Elizabeth Kuhl, a long-term substitute teacher, effective at the close of the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll take a roll call. Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I, Nicole Green, introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Sherri Arts, a long-term substitute teacher, effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the last is, I, Nicole Green, introduce the following resolution and move its adoption. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Lori Smart, a long-term substitute teacher, effective at the end of the 2016-17 school year.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, Dell?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. And employment, Dell?
Matt Mahoney interviewed five candidates for the head girls' basketball position. He's recommending that Sarah Junkheimer be hired for that position. Sarah's been in the district since 1999, where she taught FIAED and health. Also, during that time, Sarah's coached multiple levels of girls' basketball, and the past few years has served as a varsity assistant. Sarah's got a great relationship with the members of the basketball team, and Matt believes she'll be an outstanding coach. So, I would move to accept and approve of the employment of Sarah Junkheimer as the girls' head basketball coach for the 2017-2018 school year. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I just, I sat in on those interviews as a member of the athletic, the athletic representative from the School Board, and we had five candidates that were all in-house and already involved in the program, and I just came out of there feeling, well, that Matt had a difficult choice, but I felt so positive about the condition of our programs, to know that we have that many outstanding, excellent people, just, you know, ready to come in and to put that effort in. And I'm just really impressed and amazed that we have as many good people as we have in the district. So, that extra time that they put in, and the kids put in, it's definitely going to good use, and I know Sarah will do an excellent job.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving to committee reports. Nicole?
Yep. We met with the students at the high school for our monthly, now, breakfast with high school students. Rufus and I and Superintendent Brown were present. There's a group of students there that would like to begin, we've talked about this previously, a student advisory group to the Board that works directly with students and the Board, and they were, just kind of gave us an update about how their plans are going and what they want to accomplish, and what they see as the purpose of this group. There was also a lot of talk about the new flexible schedule blended learning model that's, there are some classes at the high school that are doing a trial run with, and it was, it was very good to hear the input from the students about what they like about it, what they, things they would like to see changed or improved. And also, I encourage all, all parents, students, staff members, people in the community to give us feedback. We want this program that we're considering to be beneficial to our students, to promote personal learning programs, to promote smaller teacher-student ratios, and overall, to be very beneficial in helping our students learn. And the only way that we can achieve a good program is if we get feedback, especially during these trial runs that we're doing. So, any, any feedback you would like to give, please don't hesitate to contact a teacher, the administration, or someone on the Board, or Superintendent Brown.
Very good. Strategic planning meeting. We had the third of, the third and final of our strategic planning meetings last week, and the facilitators will be collating all that information, putting together a draft proposal for a strategic plan, and they will come back and meet with the Board to discuss that. And then, hopefully, we will, we will continue to have some discussion around that plan and fine-tune it. Anybody have any comments about the process?
Great community involvement, and it really was wonderful to see so many people that wanted to get involved came and participated in that, and it, it was long, but it went really fast, so it must have been really good, in my estimation, anyway, so...
Yeah, the Bud, the Bud Room was, all the tables were pretty much full, and I really appreciate all of the community members, the teachers, the parents, the administration, everyone that came, because we met on some nights when it was absolutely beautiful outside, and the people, they still came, and they gave their input, and we really appreciate that. And once they get together and put it on paper, as a Board will look over it, and then we will ultimately bring it to a Board meeting for approval. And I, I hope that once we have it all on paper, that we can give the information to those who met with us, just so they can have a final look at what's, what's on paper, and then, before we vote, we can make sure we have feedback from them.
And just to update the Board, I actually just received the draft version of that already.
Wow.
From Jeff and Harold. And so, I noticed that we have a Staff Welfare Committee meeting tomorrow, so I'll bring a copy of that, and then I'll bring a copy of that for the Operations Committee, so all six Board members can review that in plenty of time before we make it public and bring it to the Board on the 13th of June.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
I'd like to comment that, you know, as Nicole and Dell have commented, input from our constituents is critically important. Breakfast with the Boards was instituted to try to establish a relationship with the students, to hear their voice. Fortunately, through the strategic planning process, we had an opportunity to hear from parents and teachers and community members regarding the district, and hopefully, this will not be the end of our collaboration. You know, we would hope to have continued input from, from the teachers, from parents, from students, and the community, telling us, you know, what, what we're doing well, what we can improve on, ideas to, you know, make us stronger and better. So, feel free to reach out to any and all of us on the School Board and the School Administration, you know, to share your ideas with us.
And just to piggyback on that, too, Dr. Rodriguez, the, you know, one of the general themes that came out of that whole group is that all of us want open, honest, transparent communication. And, you know, when you look at the companies and the corporations and the businesses and the universities that do great, it's those institutions that have open, transparent, honest communication, and that's what we want.
Exactly.
Good goal.
Okay. Dan, Operations Committee?
The Operations Committee meeting was, in its entirety, the two proposals for the copier bids. Each of the businesses did their presentation, and we had a long discussion afterwards to decide on, well, what we decided on tonight, whether the, the decision for the vendor that we went for, that was, that was the entirety of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Dell, Policy Committee?
On May 18th, we met for a couple of hours. Policy 805 is the waste reduction and recycling policy... This was reviewed and approved, the MSBA recommendations and the additions to policy 805. And additionally, we are, policy 613 short of our annual and our three-year review cycle, but policy 613 is a graduation requirement policy, and we have some amendments and modifications that have been made to that. And we honestly just don't know where the legislature is going to end up with some things, so we're waiting for that. We talked about chemical violation policy, and additionally, we talked about the scheduled pilot with the flex schedule. So we had great conversations and discussions there, but that is an ongoing and not ended process. Hopefully, that's a good enough update.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the board to discuss tonight?
I just wanted to mention that I've been to all of the concerts here this spring, with the exception of band, which I watched online. And they were all tremendous, between the choir, the orchestra, and the band, just kudos to all of the folks in that department and all the kids, because they, they really are tremendous. They're tremendously entertaining, when you think about seeing these kids that used, used to know as little kids, and now they're up there playing classical pieces, you know, it's, it's really amazing. So a great job to all of those involved in that. It was really enjoyable.
I agree, thank you.
Not to be long-winded, but I do want to circle back, and I mean, it was, you very eloquently talked about the, the test security data. We've talked about the strategic planning. I just have to say to the public, our school systems, we're not perfect, but wow, it's pretty impressive. Just through the planning, through, we're always being told what a great job everybody is doing by other outside agencies. That does not mean there's not work to do, so don't misunderstand me, but I'm just exceedingly proud to be part of what a great group, what a great group. And a lot of teachers, a lot of community members, they can be very proud of what's going on here. Wanted to say that, too.
I think we all agree.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn at 5:30, 6:00 P.M.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you all.
You guys picked the right meeting to come to.
The weather was bad in shorts.